One minute.
Eight by eight.
I called the meeting to order. Mr. Attorney Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Buckner?
Here.
Reverend Campbell?
Here.
Mr. Hood? Mayor Jones?
Here.
Mr. Mayo?
Here.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Here.
And Mr. Saunders?
Here.
Mr. Vogler?
Here.
Mr. Whittle?
Here.
Going to ask the Tonstall High School students to come around the podium. They're going to lead us in a pledge of allegiance. Let's welcome them. Counsel, can we give them a big hand for our young people who are here tonight? Councilman Campbell is going to lead us in prayer. Afterwards, we have our pledge of allegiance by the Tonstall High School students. Just to the council members, we lost another dear friend of ours this weekend, Nick from Nick's Towing. And Councilman Campbell, I spoke to his wife and your prayers. We're praying for this family. Nick has done a lot with the Danville Life Saving Crew and a lot for in the city of Danville. Just going to ask everyone to please stand. Councilman Campbell will lead us in invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance by the Tonstall High School students.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to say it gives me an honor to be able to pray this prayer this afternoon. If everybody could please bow your heads. Dear the Father, our God and Savior, our Lord and Master, Lord, I just want to say to you, I just want to thank you for waking us up this morning to see a brand-new day. Lord, we thank you, Lord, for all of the city employees to make this city efficient, to serve and supply all of the needs of our community. We thank you for municipality. Lord, I thank you for the city manager, the deputy city manager. Thank you for the mayor and all the city councilmen for how we are here to serve our community to the best that we can. We thank we God for, and we pray only you, not me, not mayor, not city manager, only you can comfort hearts of grief. And we pray that you are naughting and your spirit will rest upon your people. And if you do that, Lord, we'll give you praise in the midst of the storm. Help us to serve all of our people. In your name we pray. Amen.
Students from Tonstall.
Pledge allegiance.
To the heart of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all so much. Councilman Campbell, thank you so much for your prayer. Under Communications, citizens who desire to speak on any item that's not on the agenda may come forward at this time. Please state your name and your address for the record.
My name is Steve Barrow. My address is eleven, it was thirteen eleven Stoke Street in Danville. I just wanted to come up and introduce myself. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council.
Good evening.
My name is Steve Barrow and I represent Hammer Hill Computers. I started Hammer Hill Computers here in Danville about ten months ago. So basically, when I, when I tell people I moved from Fort Lauderdale, the first thing they, they ask me is, why did you move from Fort Lauderdale and why Danville? The short answer is, I got tired of the big city and for some reason, God put me here. So I feel like, like I'm here for a purpose. I'm here for, you know, for, for a reason. And, and so far, I love Danville. It's a great place. It's an awesome city. All right. The things that I've done with different cities and different municipalities down in Broward County and different, you know, different parts of South Florida, I think, put me in a position to, to bring a lot to the table here and, you know, to, to become a valuable part of Danville. So I just wanted to let you guys know that we're here. My team is here, not here with me right now, but my team is, is available and anytime there's anything that we can do, definitely lean on us. We are here for you.
Well, I've seen you out and about in the community and several events. I'm finally glad you've introduced yourself. We always, we always speak to one another.
Yeah.
But, so where's the location of your business?
It's thirty-six, thirty-three Franklin Turnpike, right over in Mount Herman area, right next to the, the county dump.
Well, tell the community some of the things that your business does.
Well, we do everything from computer repair to networking, voice-over IP, different things of that sort. We also do low voltage wiring. So one of the things that we're looking at doing is with some of the contracts that we have coming up with us, with the casino or different areas, we're looking at doing some of the low voltage. Now, one of the, one, one of the things that, that we do believe in is second chance. So I've seen a lot of people here in Danville that need that second chance. So what I really would like to do is I'd like to put some of the people to work, to, to do some of the, the networking, some of the pulling cables, different things like that, you know, because sometimes that's all a person really needs is that extra chance. They need a way to get, to stay busy so that they don't get, fall back into what they were doing before.
How many, how many employees do you currently have and how many openings do you have?
Well, right now, we have two employees. We have a few contractors, but as businesses pick up, we will have more, more opportunities. And I always post it on Facebook or post it on our website.
You start talking about helping those persons that you mentioned. I've been trying to look straight at you because Barry, you excited Barry Mayo because that's what he's all about. So let me yield to Barry.
And that's, that was, that was great to hear that. Definitely, all citizens matter and that here you say that, you know, those are individuals who always reaching out to the opportunities that can be awarded to them. So thank you so much. Can I get your phone number in just in case?
Sure. Four-three-four?
Okay.
Two-nine-eight-four-four-eight-four. And Steve, last name is Barrow, B-A-R-R-O-W.
Barrow, thank you so much. And I will be contacting you.
Okay, thank you very much. And just to let you guys know, like I said, I've done a lot with other municipalities down in Fort Lauderdale, Palm Beach area and Broward County area, different things from at-risk youth to homelessness. I've sat on a few different committees, so feel free to reach out.
Half of the city manager and deputy city manager and all the council members, they're going to like what I'm about to say. Welcome home.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. We're still in communications. Anyone who desires to speak on any item that's not on the agenda, please come forward at this time. Let me ask you to speak into the mic if you can go. Yeah, there you go.
My name is Deborah. My last name is M-C-K-K-A-G-U-E. And my address is twelve Holcomb Street in Danville. I'm also the Virginia area, Virginia, the, the local person for the Virginia School for the Deaf. And I'm also here with the National Association for the Deaf. I want to give you guys a lot of kudos for making this town amazing. I moved here in two thousand and seven and I've seen so many improvements and I, I thank you all for what you, what you've done. In the National Association of the Deaf and the ADA, it talks about the public hearings. I know we've had many public hearings. And I don't attend every one. Only, only those that impact the whole town, things that I feel are important. I think you need to have an interpreter for communication for those public hearings. You know, a public place like hospitals, restaurants, bars, movies, or other events, it would be nice to have captioning available or maybe an interpreter available. You know, I know there are several different options available. You know, sometimes it's difficult to get an interpreter, a live interpreter, or, you know, maybe we can do a video interpreter. Last year, we had the online meetings and we, we did provide the, the video interpreters. Of course, it was a teeny-tiny little interpreter in the corner and trying to see her on a small computer was difficult, difficult. So I ended up backing out of that meeting. Next time, you know, I encourage you guys to think about finding a way to access, make these meetings accessible for everybody who's deaf and hard of hearing. The reason I'm here is to share with you the secretary, who's, who's the secretary? I've got my, I've got my notes so that you guys can read them going forward. If, can I hand those to somebody?
Right here, right here is, I call him our attorney clerk tonight. Clark Whitfield is our attorney. He's right here beside me.
Okay, great. I have highlighted information on there to kind of give you ideas, you know, exactly, you know, what I'm, what I'm talking about. Please feel free to contact me about this stuff at any time. Thank you for your time this evening.
Well, let me first of all say to Ms. Cagle, thank you. Very seldom we have people come to council thanking us for all that we do. So let us applaud you.
Mr. Mayor, honestly, you, you stole my thunder. I was going to say, I just want to applaud you. You know, that's really touching. That's really touching. And, and whatever we can do to enhance what she's saying, you know, it's really touching. But you beat me, Mr. Mayor. I guess that's why you mayor.
As Councilman Campbell stated, we will definitely, our city attorney, our city manager, deputy city manager heard what was spoken and they'll be reaching out to you. We're still in commu-
Just thought what I'll, what I'll do is our office will make copies of these notes and then we'll electronically send them out to all the council members and then the city manager and the deputy city manager, as well as the clerk who's on vacation.
Thank you so much. We're still in communications. Anyone would like to speak on any item that's not on the agenda may come forward now. Please state your name and your address for the record. Want to say good evening to you all. You can speak right into that microphone. Good evening.
All right. My name is Katrina Gregory. My address is fifty-five thirty-two U.S. Highway twenty-nine, Blairs, Virginia, two-four-five-two-seven.
Welcome.
All right. And was there anything else?
No, you've done it. Just tell us why you're here.
Phone number, just in case somebody needed. Four-three-four-four-eight-nine-three-nine-six-eight.
Thank you.
All right. We here because we were, well, we're gonna, I'm gonna be coming anyway. You know, I hadn't been to a city council meeting before today, but we've been, I've been talking with Mr. Mayo and he asked us to come on down today and, you know, tell what we've been doing.
Did you, did you hear Ms. Cagle before, Ms. McCagle, before you came and spoke all those wonderful things about city council members? Is that why you're here?
Which is, no. Now, one of the things, I wanted to get out to the community and we've been doing, you know, I think we've been doing pretty good is, first of all, my, my son died in twenty eighteen to suicide. He shot himself in front of my husband and I. And from that, the Lord had dropped it in my heart to do paying it forward for Jerel. So if you've seen this around town anywhere, we've been doing this since twenty nineteen. So this year was the third year. His, the anniversary of his death was September the fifth, which was Sunday. So we've been paying it forward for Jerel to keep his legacy, his honor, you know, his name remembered. So what my husband and I decided to come up with is in the surrounding areas, we would pay it forward, whether it would be Starbucks cards, whether it be gas, anything that you could do for someone. We asked people to join with us and do something, you know, nice on that day to impact someone else's, someone else's life. So with that being said, the first year we did it, we had people in New York, we had people in Florida, we had people in DC, people in Pennsylvania County, in Gretna, in Martinsville, all over, that put up videos and they did different things. So we asked them to upload their video. We asked them to tell what they did, if the recipient was okay with you doing that. Because you know, when you do something for someone, some people are not okay with you telling their business. So if it was okay, we asked them to do that. So they did. So then the Lord dropped in my heart to do a nonprofit organization. So what we started also was paving the way. So Sunday was our nonprofit launch and that was just to bring awareness to what we are bringing to the city of Danville and the surrounding areas. And what we'll be doing is bring, our mission, I do want to state our mission. Our mission is to impact, you know, families that have experienced sudden loss. And we would like to, you know, do that, what, what, helping them with social groups, recreational activities, activities and stuff like that. So our mission is to assist families who experience a sudden loss in the process of healing through grief education and peer support. So with that being said, we have so many things going on where you, whether it's a car accident, we just, if you all know, it was a car accident right up there on twenty-nine, right there at North Point and at the lights where some, two people burnt up, completely burnt up in a car the other day. So with families that impact, be impacted with that, sometimes you don't know what to do. And then sometime you seclude yourselves because, you know, the grief and, and then some people turn to alcoholism. Some people turn to, you know, where they have mental challenges and different things like that. So with our group, this is, these are two that's on my board. My secretary, Alicia Harrison, and then Tiana Minzelli, and she's my executive director. I'm the president. But with that being said, we wanted to help with some of the sudden losses that happens. And one of the things I wanted to bring attention to is that Danville has the, has the state's highest per capita homicide rate. And then not only that, you know, we have, if I'm not mistaken, in Virginia, the highest in the suicide, if I'm not mistaken. We did a little work or whatever. I'm hoping I'm not misquoting anything. But with that being said, we have a lot going on in Danville, Pennsylvania County, in the surrounding areas, you know, in Virginia or whatever. So we wanted to be there as a nonprofit organization and help the community. So we, we have started building the board, I mean, we have our board. We have put in five oh one C three and different things like that. But we just wanted to let you all know that we will be an entity in the community that you all can contact and reach out to once we have fully finished everything and got everything going, because we won't have like the social groups until twenty twenty-two. But the virtual things, we're going to be doing some of those things, you know, latter part of this year, which we already at the end of the year almost. But we wanted to get that out so that you all would know a little something about what we're doing. And it's called Paving the Way.
Well, first of all, we, prayers are with you in the loss of your son. And you've taken the situation and really blessing a lot of people through paying it forward for Jerel. So give the address again, the name of your nonprofit to be and the address and how people can get in touch with you.
Okay. The name of the nonprofit is Paving the Way. The address is fifty-five thirty-two U.S. Highway twenty-nine, Blairs, Virginia, two-four-five-two-seven. And then the phone number is four-three-four-four-eight-nine-three-nine-six-eight. And the website address is pavingtheway dot, I mean, pavingthewayva.org.
Spell it all out.
What'd you say?
Spell it out. Paving the Way. Spell it out.
P-A-V-I-N-G-T-H-E-W-A, I mean, W-A-Y-V-A dot O-R-G.
Fantastic. Is, is Alicia and Tiana, is there anything you want to add?
She says she'll cry, so.
Well, again, we thank you all for being here tonight. It's very, when you talk about paying it forward, but, and I know Councilman Mayo, once again, I yield to you.
Thank you, Mayor. And I did attend this event on, on Sunday and it was fantastic. Wade, Katrina and her group have really put it together. A lot of people were there in support and in reference to the event itself. And right when you, I was there to represent the council in the city, I got a call that night from that accident you said about. And it was a dear friend of mine, a member of my church that was very close to me and I did not know.
Oh.
So I understood right then. It just all just hit me. But from what you're doing and witnessing how your son, what he went through and so many others out here, you are a very intricate part of our community and we want to welcome you. That's why I wanted to invite you out to meet the council, to meet and to mention about what you're doing. And you have linked up with the Suicide Prevention of Danville, Pennsylvania County, and we're glad that you did that. And when they called upon me, I, I, I just said, what can I do?
That's right.
To be of help. And we're here for you. So thank you so much. And, and we're here and we want to let you know that.
And, and I do want to say before we walk off, it's not just suicide, it's sudden loss.
Yes.
So whether it's a miscarriage, we had a lady Sunday that spoke on, you know, her baby was delivered, which we would consider it, I would, it's stillborn. But anyway, baby was delivered, you know, died. And then we had someone to speak on that child being hit. It was a hit and run, but he died. So that was, you know, a homicide. And then someone's child died in a car accident. And, you know, so we have, you know, we're going to be in, you know, helping assist families in all areas. And when we say families, we mean the father, the mother, the children and the grandparents, you know, whoever it is.
Councilman Saunders.
Mayor, can we give them a hand, please?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to know, is there a fee for the service?
Is, Councilman Saunders was wondering, is there a fee for the service? Is there cost?
So far, no. You know, what we'll be doing, you know, no one has to pay for anything. You know, and we haven't done any grants or anything yet like that. So it's, it's all donor-funded so far, but we will get into that. But so far, we are new and, and anything we do will be free.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. I want to thank Councilman Campbell for applauding you all. You all, you had a situation where you and your husband have really gone through and you want to give back and you want to pay it forward to the community. And so to you and your husband and your board, thank you for what you're doing for our community. Thank you so much.
And I, and I tell people that's therapy for me. He's not, he, he's kind of not ready yet. You know, he's like, I don't want to talk. I don't, because it's hard. It was just twenty eighteen. But for me, it's therapy, you know, to be able to help someone else.
Well, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We're still in communications. Anyone who would like to speak on any item that's not on the agenda may come forward at this time. Anyone would like to speak on any item that's not on the agenda may come forward at this time. Under minute, meeting minutes, counsel, what's your pleasure? Councilman Buckner?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes from a regular council meeting held August fifth, twenty twenty-one.
Second by Councilman Whittle, discussion of the motion. Mr. Attorney, call the roll, please.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Mayo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Under new business, consideration of rezoning, one eighty American Legion Boulevard, open the public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak on this agenda item may come forward at this time. Please state your name and your address for the record and good evening to you, sir.
Good evening. I'm Mark Johnson with L E N D Professionals here in Danville. I'm here for two reasons. I want to thank y'all for all y'all do in the city of Danville.
Very good.
I'm representing DNR Jones for this, this rezoning request. He's had a lot of interest in this property for multifamily development. And of course, the first thing we've got to do is get it rezoned before anybody moves forward with it. So I do have an owner's representative with me. If you all have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Again, thank you so much for being here. I don't think there are any questions.
Thank you.
We're still in public hearing. Anyone else would like to speak on this agenda item may come forward at this time. We're still in public hearing. Anyone else would like to speak on this agenda item may come forward at this time. I close the public hearing. Councilman Vogler?
Yes, Mayor, I move we adopt an ordinance rezoning one eight zero American Legion Boulevard parcel ID number seven-three-two-two-seven from TR Threshold Residential to MR Multifamily Residential District.
Second by Councilman Whittle, discussion of the motion. Mr. Attorney, call the roll, please.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Mayo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Now, item B, consideration of rezoning two-one-two Jefferson Avenue, open the public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak on this agenda item may come forward at this time. Anyone who would like to speak on this agenda item may come forward at this time. I close the public hearing. Councilman Buckner?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve an ordinance rezoning two-one-two Jefferson Avenue, parcel ID two-four-six-eight-nine, from OTR, Old Town Residential Zoning District, to MR, Multifamily Residential Zoning District.
Second by Councilman Whittle, discussion of the motion. Councilman Buckner?
Yeah, Mayor, you guys know very well the property that this is. This is the big brick six-plex on the right-hand side going down Jefferson. We've all passed it all our lives. You'd be absolutely amazed at the work that's going on in that place. I encourage you to stop in and take a look at it if you have a chance. This is something that's really going to be nice, a very nice addition to the neighborhood. Also, this, for those at home that don't realize, this is just, basically, it's kind of a lateral rezoning. So it's going, it's already a, a multiplex. It's just changing, changing the definition of, of the zoning. So anyway, I'm definitely in support of it. It's a great project and I challenge you all to stop by and take a look at it.
Councilman Vogler?
Yeah, Councilman Buckner, this, this is also right next to the church that's being renovated.
Church of Perpetual Boogie, yes.
Lot, lot of good things happening over in that area, Mayor.
When you, when, when Councilman Buckner spoke and you raised your hand, I knew something was coming. Anyone else? Mr. Attorney, call the roll, please.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Mayo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Mr. Campbell? Reverend Campbell?
Under item C, consideration of meaning the zoning ordinance regarding short-term rentals, I open the public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak on this agenda item may come forward at this time. Anyone who would like to speak on this agenda item may come forward at this time. I close the public hearing. Councilman Buckner?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve an ordinance repealing and ordaining certain articles and sections of Chapter forty-one entitled zoning ordinance of the city of Danville, Virginia, more specifically removing and updating portions of Article two entitled general regulations and removing and updating portions of Article fifteen entitled definitions.
Second by Councilman Mayo, discussion of the motion. Mr. Attorney, call the roll, please.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Mayo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle? Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Under item D, consideration of the fiscal year twenty twenty-two aviation promotion grant, counsel, what's your pleasure? Dr. Miller?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to propose a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept a grant agreement from the Virginia Department of Aviation to promote aviation awareness at the Danville Regional Airport.
Second by Councilman- Second by Councilman Saunders. Number two, Dr. Miller.
Yes, an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2022 ballot budget appropriation ordinance to provide for a State Department of Aviation grant for the purpose of providing funding to promote aviation awareness at the Danville Regional Airport in the amount of $7,500. And for the local share in the amount of $7,500 provided by the general fund support of grants for total appropriation of $15,000 and appropriate, appropriate the same, first reading.
Dr. Miller, mine has first reading on it. Can we go back and do number one, please? D, D1. Can you redo that one again, please?
Yes, a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept a grant agreement from the Virginia Department of Aviation to promote aviation awareness at the Danville Regional Airport.
Councilman Saunders, you still second that? In discussion of that motion, Mr. Attorney, call the roll, please.
Mr. Mayo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye. Now, Dr. Miller, can you do number two, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance amending the fiscal year 2022 budget appropriation ordinance to provide for a State Department of Aviation grant for the purpose of providing funding to promote aviation awareness at the Danville Regional Airport in the amount of $7,500. And for the local share in the amount of $7,500 provided by the general fund support of grants for a total appropriation of $15,000 and appropriating same, first reading.
Second by Councilman Buckner. Under item E, can, Councilman Saunders?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question, Mr. Larkin. I think Mr. Airport Manager is here. In reading this, it talks about the two grand, $7,500, $15,000. I read in the package about taking young people for rides. So two question, any idea about how many young people will be able to take the flight, one? And secondly, will the pilots be local or from out of town?
And number three, what is the age group of the young people?
Thank you, thank you. I'd like to know.
Okay, see if I can remember all three questions. The pilots, the number of children that will, students that'll be able to complete a flight are ages eight to 17, ages eight to 17. And it's dependent upon the number of pilots that will be available to complete flights. Most of the pilots that will be flying that day, hopefully on October 30th, are primarily from the Apex, North Carolina Experimental Aircraft Association Chapter, which is near Raleigh, North Carolina. For last time, we, two years ago when we held the event, we had about 135 students that completed a free flight. We've done almost as many as 200 in the past. But it depends a lot on, on the pilot that will be available to fly that day.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, thank you, Mark. Under item E, consideration of amending the fiscal year 2022 budget appropriation ordinance for Virginia Commission for the Arts Grant. Council, what's your pleasure? Councilman Vogler.
Yes, Mayor, I move we adopt an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2022 budget appropriation ordinance to provide for a Virginia Commission for the Arts Grant in the amount of $4,500 and local share in the amount of $5,000 for a total of $9,500. First reading.
Second by Councilman Whittle. Under item F, consideration of amending the fiscal 2022 budget appropriation for economic development incentives. Council, what's your pleasure? Councilman Buckner.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2022 budget appropriation ordinance for one Tobacco Region Opportunity Fund Grant from the Virginia Tobacco Region Revitalization Commission in the amount of $330,000 and a one Tobacco Region Opportunity Fund Loan from the Virginia Tobacco Region Revitalization Commission in the amount of $330,000 for a total amount of $660,000 as an economic development incentives for taxable capital investments and job creations in the Commonwealth of Virginia. First reading.
Second by Councilman Mayo. Communications, city manager?
I have nothing this evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Deputy city manager?
Nothing this evening. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Mr. City Attorney?
Nothing this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yeah, we've lost another prominent citizen to COVID. If you'll notice today, the Mees Restaurant, Mees Burgers was closed as the owners passed succumbed to COVID. Tragedy continues. Last Thursday night, I had a patient come in with a heart attack. We took him to the cath lab. His arteries were full of clot, very little blockage. It was all clot. This is what COVID does to you. It just clots your arteries all over, lungs, heart, legs. We got him through it, but, you know, he, it was unvaccinated. And I counted up the number of people he exposed, 16 people. You count the rescue squads, the firemen that come, the emergency room personnel, five of us in the cath lab. All were exposed to fulminant COVID. And I just implore people to get the vaccination. It's not, it's, it's not just a me thing that I want to, I don't want to take the shot. You're endangering countless others. Every person that didn't get a shot can expose 15 or 20 or 30 people, relatives and first responders. Talking to Gene Jackson about it. Gene is on the Airport Commission. He lives in Danville. He does a lot of work, he does, works in this emergency room. He works in the Eden Emergency Room predominantly right now. But he's a physician's assistant. He treated 2,935 COVID patients in that emergency room over a three to four month period. He alone. The emergency room departments are overwhelmed. They can't handle the volume. You can't, you wait for hours in the emergency room. And that's not just Danville. That's Lynchburg, that's Eden. Eden's owned by North Carolina University. They can't even transfer their patients there. Their parent hospital can't take the patients. They don't have capacity. We're being overwhelmed right now. There's just no good way to put it. So please, get your vaccination. This is not a joke. This is not political. This is real. People are dying every day. And it's hitting the young people now. This Delta variant is much more deadly on young persons. It's not uncommon to see 39-year-old with a heart attack, 25-year-old, 30-year-old. It's hitting younger and younger. This isn't like the original COVID that predominantly hit the elderly. And on a good note, the American Heart Association Walk will be September 25th at Anglers Park. Please come if you want to join my team. I need some people on my team. Contact me or show up at 10 o'clock, Anglers Park, the 25th of September. And you can walk one mile, you can walk two miles, you can walk four miles. You can contribute $5, $10, $50. But it's for a good cause for the American Heart Association. And again, we'd love to have more people walking. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Saunders?
I think, Mr. Mayor, just want to echo what Vice Mayor Miller said with regards to the vaccination. I don't know anything different to say other than to encourage people to get it. We've had it, I'm waiting on the booster. I'll be getting that when it comes out as well. But it is, it's really sad when you lose a loved one and you can't go to the funeral because of situation that, the health situation of the person that's deceased. And you can't be with family members because of the same thing. So these are some really sad times. And the more we can minimize the spread, the better off we'll be. So just to echo, Mr. Mayor, what Vice Mayor just said.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Vogler?
Yeah, I, you know, in the last few weeks alone, this community has lost several people to COVID, many of which were very well-known in this community. And I don't want to go through and mention different people's names. But it's highly likely that everybody in this room and everybody watching at home knows someone who passed away from COVID just in the last few weeks. It's very real. And I'm kind of at a loss for words, you know, to, to, you know, I feel like we're kind of repeating ourselves in here. And I hate doing that. But I will say, on a somewhat positive note regarding this, I saw that vaccinations in our district were up last month versus the previous one. More people are starting to get the vaccine. We still got a long way to go. But I think we're now 51, 52% in the city of Danville of adults who now have it, which is an improvement. We still need to get higher than that, obviously. But with this Delta variant, as Dr. Miller said, you know, it's, it's, it's impacting a lot of people. And it's, it's worse than the variant we were seeing a year ago. And I know that there will be some who will point out and say, well, even people who've been vaccinated are getting COVID now because of the, the new variant. And that's true. But if you look at the statistics, and I got them in front of me, and these are from a few weeks ago, so they're not up to the minute. But at the time this was printed, Virginia, 99.3% of the reported cases at the time that this was printed were non-vaccinated people. Now, maybe that's number has changed slightly since then, but it, and Doc can attest to this. I imagine that the hospitalization numbers and the death numbers are also very much in line with those numbers. And out of Virginia, you could go state by state by state by state. It is overwhelmingly unvaccinated people who are coming down with COVID. And even those who have been vaccinated who get it are getting over it much easier than those who have not been. I know folks who, who did get the vaccine and have had COVID and within a day or so, they feel normal. And quite frankly, it runs through their system and they're gone. Those who haven't been, it's a much different situation. Again, I, you know, don't listen to me. Please, talk to your doctor. Like, talk to your doctor and ask them then. Don't listen to, as much as I'm going to sit here and encourage you to do it. At the end of the day, you shouldn't listen to me. You shouldn't listen to a governor or senator or anybody like that. You should talk to your doctor and then think long and hard about what's happening around us. And if not for yourself, think about the kids in our region who don't have a choice. If you're under 12 years old, you don't even have the option of getting the vaccine right now. So the best that they can do is hope their immune system can help them out and wear a mask and, and hope that those around them are doing the right things. But again, I don't believe that people should be forced to get the vaccine. But man, I really encourage folks to think long and hard about getting it. I'm gonna get off of that. I want to end on something positive. Tomorrow morning, there's going to be another good economic development announcement for our city and our region. And I encourage folks to tune in to River City TV. We just had a great announcement, I guess it was a few weeks ago. I don't know, we've had so many positive announcements and with economic development, it's kind of hard to keep up with them all. But it is, it is a good time for economic growth and a lot of positive things that are happening in Danville. And, and we are the comeback city. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Whittle? Mr. Buckner?
Yeah, first of all, I'd like to just take a minute to thank every one of you guys individually, each one of you. As many of you guys know at home, all these guys know, my mother passed away last, Wednesday before last. And it was instantly, I started getting phone calls and text messages. And there hadn't been one day that I haven't heard from one of you guys since then. The, the love that you guys have shown me and my family, we'll, we'll remember and cherish that always. Every, I mean, the community leaders, Tommy Bennett was there, just everybody you can imagine just came out in droves and supported and surrounded my family with love and support. And I will be eternally grateful for the things you guys have done for me in the past couple of weeks. Just, I have no, words just can't, I just can't describe how thankful I am for you guys. Thank you so much. Real quick, as most of you guys know, there's a big event happening this weekend out in Blairs, the Blue Ridge Rock Festival. If you're traveling on 29, if you're traveling on Pony Forest, anywhere around town, just give yourself a little bit more time, be patient. There'll be 40,000-plus people attending this event this weekend. And it's going to make traffic a little bit more difficult. So just be patient. You'll get where you're going. And I think you, you'll see a lot of folks here in the next few weeks. I know they had an event this past weekend. There were several thousand there, I think 10 or 15,000 there. This week, like I said, they're estimating 40,000 people per day at the event. So just, just be prepared. Traffic's going to be a little hectic this weekend. So just be careful. That's all. Thank you.
Can I add, can I add something? Yeah, there were like a dozen wrecks on that stretch there. The traffic patterns were completely changed and people weren't used to it. So there were a lot of wrecks, the county police reported. So be careful when you drive up through there. Be very careful.
Reverend Campbell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and to the city of Danville, to all of the concerned citizens who spoke before we started the agenda. Tonight was a good representation of what Danville is all about. And it was so special to me, the love that is shown. And I just want to say that Dan was special and we are in a good state and we moving forward. And the future looks bright. And I just pray that we can make sure that we are catering all areas of the community, that we can receive the prosperity that is upon us and the blessings of God. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And to the grief in the community and to all, you know, we, we, we carry that concern deeply within our hearts.
Mr. Hood?
Yeah, I want to give a special thanks to the students from Tunsil High School for leading us in a pledge of allegiance today. We really appreciate you all. And I would like to acknowledge our city for being placed on the TEDx platform. TEDx Danville, the theme is demonstrating the resilience of Danville, transitioning from a meal town without a meal. This platform reaches 32 million people. And the speakers who presented that TED Talk were our very own Cory Bobey, Diane Shortz and Warwick Scott. So that's, to me, that's a pretty big deal that Danville is on the TEDx platform now.
You.
Mayor, can you guys?
I, I just, he's very humble, but I think we should give a round of applause for Councilman Hood because he was very active in making that happen, that brought that here and all that. So.
What's the number of people who you said, what, how many people view that?
Have, well, they have, they reached 32 millions, 32 million subscribers can see Danville in that light.
Lee, Lee, I think, I don't think people are really paying attention. Brian is very humble and 32 million people. Good job.
Appreciate it. Mr. Mayo?
Thank you. Brian, that is, that's a big triumph right there. Definitely thank you, Mr. Barrel, for coming out and introducing your business to us. We welcome you here in Danville. The students at Tunsil High School, thank you for being here. One, the, also thank Paving the Way. The event was just phenomenal, being out there, seeing Katrina and her staff do the things they're doing in the community. I actually gave a donation to it. And that's something that even in these times, it's always adamant to have a source to reach out to, especially what we all are going through. And the accident that happened on Pony Forest, I remember hearing about it Saturday morning and, and told about the whole thing in reference to the car catching on fire and individuals in the car. They were not able to save in any kind of way. But it just hit home when I found out it was someone that I really knew and was close to. Member of my church, very great young man, Brian Bowden, his wife Angela, I talked to her on the phone yesterday. Council members, I think it's one of the hardest things to talk to, a wife who just lost a husband. And she was not home. She was out visiting, out of town, visiting her, her mother and got the call. And so just my heart goes out to her and her family. Keep the Bowden family in prayer. That young man, he meant so much and he touched a lot of people, just humble. But for it to happen, just, it just, it just broke me down a lot. And the vaccination, Dr. Miller, I hear you. Every time you speak, I'm always tuning in on you. And, and all the council members, we, we continue to push that, that entity to individuals who are not vaccinated and the safety of being vaccinated. We have to keep practicing that because, like you said, it's never going to get better. It's never going to wait until we decide we need to make a change and do something about it. So all that are listening out there, please, man, please, sir, take the precautions, think about it, talk it over with your family. Life, as you see, is, is short. And we have experienced so many tragedies and things that are happening. And with the COVID, it's just. are happening and with the COVID, it's just those things, how much, I know we do have some more control over that, we can. We just have to do what's right for all and, and take a chance to, just take a step to even educate others. And it was hitting our schools and our children and wow, what more can we say? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Jones?
To the Tunsil students, could you stand up again, please? Stand up, please. I, as long as I've been on council, and I think Councilman Vogler remembers this very well, we've always tried to figure out, and it's very exciting, why the county students always come to the city government's council meeting. You all just don't know how much that means to, I don't know why it happens and Councilman Vogler and I, but we happy that you're here and please continue to come. Thank you all. Let's give them another. Tommy and I, you may have your seats. Tommy and I had an opportunity to say thank you to Pastor Emmett Young. He serves on some of our boards in our city and he's leaving Danville. This is his last Sunday in Danville and we appreciate him serving on our city boards and also being a pastor in our city. We were able to go by there Sunday and just thank him for all that he's done for our city. To the city manager and the deputy city manager and thank you, Dr. Miller, for what you said earlier. Our staff members are really out and about, but to our city managers, deputy city manager, city attorney, and all of our city employees for all the work that you do and do and do and do. Recently, we announced that we were giving them a stipend, what do we call it, a stipend?
Premium pay bonus.
Premium pay bonus. And not only that, but we talked to the city council members with, with our staff and also the school staff, we worked together for that. I don't think people, when you listen to these testimonies around the microphone tonight and what they're having to endure with our teachers and people who don't want to get this shot, and I'm not going to go into it because, like I've said so many times before, I don't know what else we can do. But to all of our city staff that are out there working in the midst of all of this, our school teachers and all of our school staff, we want to thank you so much for all you do and it's just, it's not enough. But again, I want to thank you for leading the way on that. It meant, it meant a lot to me and you talking to me on the phone about it, even with the school system and how you and the superintendent worked on that. Our strategies, if you all remember, one of our strategies was education. We moved education to the number one, young people. We moved education to our number one strategy. And you see these signs all over town that says, "Vote Yes for DPS." And there's been a lot of questions about the 1% tax. I just want to yield to the city manager and he's going to give us a little bit information about this, but we really, really, council has made education our first priority and city manager, I'm just going to yield to you for a second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just some factual information about the referendum. The school system demonstrated a capital need to the city and presented a request to city council to allow for a referendum for a 1% local option sales tax to pay for capital improvements within the Danville public schools. They presented the need, they have demonstrated that there were multiple capital improvements that needed to be done on multiple campuses throughout the city. The city council approved that a referendum would go to the voters where they can consider whether or not to vote for or against a 1% local option sales tax, which if voted for would generate, there are two measures actually, one related to the 1% sales tax and one related to allowing debt to, to be incurred. Both would be needed frankly, to be able to meet the need currently. That has been demonstrated by the school system. It would generate 141 million through debt service in order to meet that need for the school system. The 1% would apply to only items that are currently taxed through sales tax, so it would not include groceries or medicine or anything like that. There have been some questions about other ways of funding the capital needs of the school system and yes, there are other options. The, the most common option that many think of is a real estate tax. That would also have, would have required a referendum by the voters to vote for or against. The challenge with the ref, with the real estate tax increase, it would be equivalent to, I think, some 40 some cents on the dollar, which is a high, almost taking about, we, we currently have an 84 cent real estate tax. It would be a pretty significant increase in order to fund the needs of the school system. So a 1% local option sales tax is more achievable. We understand that a lot of people who would be paying this tax actually live outside of the city limits, so we'd have people from outside of the city paying the tax, which would help fund the schools. And the other question that I believe comes up is of the casino, whether or not that could pay for it. Frankly, that we wouldn't be able to borrow money on what we might anticipate as being revenue from the casino because there is no casino currently, it hasn't been built. We have no track record of what kind of revenue it generate, so no bank would lend us money on a tax revenue source that has no track record. So there, there wouldn't really be a good way to be able to borrow the funds to pay for the capital needs of the school system. So those are, I think, the questions that people have been asking. I, I'm trying to be as factual as I can. I, I've reviewed the website that, that is on that sign, I think, or there is a sign, yes. And it appears that there's a frequently asked question list there that to me looked like factual questions with factual answers. So if you have questions, then you can probably look at the website. I have no affiliation with the website. All I can say is that I've briefly read some things on there and it appears to be factual information.
Thank you so much. Oftentimes you hear, we get calls and Councilman Saunders taught us this very well, that they have, the school board has an elected body and we elected body, but there are some things that the city council can do. And just for instance, when we heard, the council heard about the fights at George Washington High School, we did not interfere with the school board, but when it comes to violence, we will not tolerate it. And our police chief and Robert David, we contacted the police chief, Robert David, city manager, and they got right on it. We're not going to tolerate it. So we're not trying to micromanage or try to take over the school board, but this is something that's very needed. We're supporting it and I'm hoping you, the citizens, if you have any questions, as the city manager just stated, you can go to the website, www.voteyesfordps.com. And when you don't hear, things that are going in the school system, if you don't hear council saying anything, it doesn't mean we're not involved. We just know our role. City Manager.
I forgot to say that in my role as city manager, it's my responsibility to recommend a budget to the city council for consideration. And as part of that, you know, it includes recommendations on the, the rates for various taxes and, and things like that, and then how to spend the money that's generated from those taxes. So I wanted to elaborate on, you know, in my role as trying to fund the operations of the city, which includes a budget for the school system, that this 1% local option sales tax provides a good option to fund the needs that have been identified by the school board.
And also I, I think it's very important that you touch base on when things happen in regards to our response to the violence and what you do as the city manager with our police chief and our gang prevention guy. Can you touch bases on how we address that issue in the school system when it comes to violence?
Well, thankfully, it's pretty rare that that happens. Of course, it does happen. I remember growing up, I think everybody, anybody who went to public schools could probably remember multiple times themselves experiencing an issue in the school system. I, you know, I've walked past, you know, I remember as a kid walking past, you know, very brief interactions that were, that got physical and got broken up pretty quickly. So that happens. So thankfully, that kind of stuff is rare, but obviously as a, a city and a partner of the school system, we do what we can to assist the school system in issues, you know, when issues like that happen and, you know, usually it's very minor and can be handled by school staff and it gets dealt with in the ways that they have to deal with them. If it gets to be bigger than that, then obviously our, our police department, department can be involved. But we do have a focus here and the city council started this many years ago after retreat that, you know, for a lot of the issues that, that we deal with, we try prevention and intervention efforts first. And the mayor mentioned Robert David, he is our gang prevention coordinator. His role is to, to work with really anybody at any age, but he works with youth a lot, to intervene and prevent crimes before they happen or issues before they happen. So he's been involved in the school system to help, you know, whenever that issue has come up in a, in a school environment, is able to provide advice and guidance and assistance. And again, we're just going to always focus as much as we can as a city on intervention and prevention before suppression because anytime you can prevent a crime from happening or intervene before a crime happens, then that is the best way to go forward because there's no victim and there's nobody perpetrating a crime, which is also helpful to them in their future as well.
And let's also remember, and, and I think the public, so you'll know, there are so many wonderful things going on in our school system and when these little incidents occur, let's focus on the bigger picture, the thousands and thousands of good things, Mr. Hood, that are going on. We'll take this situation, not making it small, but there's so many good things. And I want you young people to understand, that's why I asked you all to stand. We don't celebrate you all enough and that's why we've celebrated you all several times and that's, those, these are the things that the city manager stated that we must do. Dr. Miller?
Yeah, would you let the public know they don't have to wait till November 3rd, 2nd to vote? When does the voting start?
Early voting start, I got something from Peggy, early voting start in September and I don't have a date.
Makes the 17th.
Yes.
Yeah, you can vote at the...
17th of September. You can early vote at September the 17th and that's why we bring this, back to you, Dr. Miller.
Now, thank you. I just want to let people know they can vote for the school board referendum or the referendum and the governor and all the devil. You can vote, you don't have to wait till November 2nd to vote.
But I, and I thank you all so much. I didn't mean to take a lot of time on this, but we take situations sometimes and we blow them up, Councilman Hood, and there's so many wonderful things that are going on and we don't hear those things. So there's so many things that's going on in our school system that is wonderful and we want to be able to, and young people, thank you all so much because it led me right into what we need to do tonight. Wish you all was in Danville so y'all can vote yes. Anything else from anyone else? It's been a great meeting tonight. Thank you all again for being here. Sir, are you, sir, are you one of the parents of one of the young people?
No.
I'm telling the sir on the front row, are you one of the parents of the young people? Can you stand, let us applaud you for being here tonight? That's all, and thank you so much. Thank you. On that note, we are adjourned.